All right, welcome to the Monday, September 14th, 2015 Planning Commission meeting. The first item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Will you please stand?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the first item on the agenda is the approval of tonight's agenda. Do we have any changes, amendments, concerns? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion. Chair?
I move to approve the agenda.
Second?
Second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
The agenda is approved. All right, the next item is the approval of the minutes. Any amendments, concerns, additions, attractions?
Mr. Chair, I have a couple of quick comments, but they're very minor and I can discuss it with her afterwards, if that's okay.
Sounds good. All right, I'll entertain the motion.
Move to, oh, go ahead. Move to approve the minutes of the last meeting.
Second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. All right, we're on to our public hearings. First one is Eden Prairie Retail by EP Equities LLC. The location is 590 Prairie Center Drive. This is a request for a planned unit development concept review on 0.8 acres, a planned unit development district review with waivers on 0.8 acres, zoning district amendment within the commercial regional services, CReg, sir, zoning district on .8 acres, a site plan review on .8 acres. Will the proponent please step forward?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Can we please state your name and spell it for the record, please?
Sheldon Berg, S-H-E-L-D-O-N, last name B-E-R-G. I'm with DJR Architecture.
Would you like, do you have a presentation you'd like to guide us through your proposal, or?
Sure. Is there an overhead I should be using?
Meeting chair members of the commission. I am representing the owner, or the soon-to-be owner of the property, and we are looking to redevelop the site, which is on, which is 590 Prairie Center Drive. If you just bear with me one second. As you may know, there is an existing Famous Dave's restaurant located on the site, which is around 3,000 square feet with a drive-thru. And we are looking to redevelop the site with a retail uses and eliminating the drive-thru and then adding some additional parking on the periphery. Our request also includes some adjustments to the existing approvals for the current PUD. We're looking for around 7,200 square feet of development. And the project would also include improvements to the parking area, including a trash and slash recycling enclosure, and bike parking, and some other pedestrian improvements, as well as a fair amount of additional landscaping on the street side, as well as in the rest of the site. And, bear with me one second. So, as well as stormwater improvements on the south side. And, there, I guess, that shows. So, the street side's here, parking here, there's a shared parking agreement with the folks to the south. Additional landscaping that's being provided in these locations, basically around the perimeter. And the stormwater facility is here on the southwest corner of the property. And the inclusion of that stormwater facility also necessitates the addition of a retaining wall along that edge to, you know, make the grade work for the coverage for the underground stormwater. The elevations for the building are fairly straightforward, fairly simple. Straight eve lines. There is some breakup in the cornice line. We've got an overhanging cornice. Predominantly, the project is brick with a little bit of cast stone and then a small portion of eaves at the entry points, as well as storefront glazing. And then some canopies, both fabric canopies and some metal canopies, to add a little further depth to the elevations and some visual interest, as well as giving it some pedestrian scale. And, that's the, we're looking to do, or have, two tenants at the parcel. And both of them are retail in use, so they're not in the restaurant kind of heavier traffic and parking requirements realm, let's just say. That's, I think that's, it's a pretty straightforward project by and large. I could stand for questions, or if there's anything from Julie, I guess.
Do we have any initial questions from the commission? Was there a colored version of the rendering? Or colors described?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, I do have a materials board over here. I'll be happy to bring over to the document camera.
So, the materials that we're using are, basically, like as I described, there's basically three materials with two different colors and two of the materials. The cast stone base is sort of a warm gray that's here. And then there is brick, both a light-colored brick and a darker Richard Brown-colored brick on the building, as well as complimentary eaves colors at some of the entries into the stores. And then the, and it is aluminum, which would be used for the storefront framing. It's a clear anodized, so it's basically silver in color.
Any other initial questions? Is there anything from the city?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, in addition to the information that the proponent has shared with you, the proposal does include two requests for waivers. The first is a waiver to the front yard parking setback, excuse me, front yard setback. The city code requires 35-foot front yard setback. The proponent is seeking a 30-foot setback in order to utilize as much construction on the site as is there. In addition, they are seeking a waiver from the floor area ratio requirement. City code requires a .2 FAR, and they are seeking a .207 FAR. So, they're just a squeak above what this requirement is. As you'll note, in the memo, staff does discuss the fact that the proponent did go above and beyond city code requirements for the construction materials, as well as the architectural requirements. As you can see by the elevations, there's a lot of detail provided in the elevations with the wall deviations, the variety of materials, integrating the canopies to enhance that pedestrian experience, and as well as proposing landscaping that exceeds the city code requirement. The landscaping plan now includes the use of perennials and prairie grasses and things of that sort as well. So, staff is recommending approval of the project and the waivers as proposed. There is one condition that staff has proposed as a part of this. The overall site plan does not meet the 5% parking island requirement. So, staff is suggesting that the site plan be revised prior to the city council first reading of this application in order to revise that and meet that requirement. In addition, I wanted to discuss with the planning commission. Commissioner Farr did reach out this morning and had several issues that he identified as potential discussion topics for the commission. So, he and I spent some time visiting on those today, so I'd like to just do a brief overview of what some of those are. The intent of our conversation would be that if the commission agrees or concurs, that these issues would rise to the level of needing additional review by the applicant, that staff would continue to work with the applicant on these issues prior to city council first reading, rather than, you know, attaching specific conditions to the approval or coming back to the commission with additional revisions. So, if you don't mind, I'll dive right into those. The first issue was the retaining wall. As you know, the plans include a retaining wall along Flying Cloud Drive. The suggestion was to continue to work with the applicant to provide some aesthetic detail or improvements to that retaining wall, excuse me, whether that's incorporation of color or texture or landscaping, something to beautify that retaining wall area and provide a little more interest in detail. The second issue was the trash enclosure. As of now, the site plan includes a standalone trash enclosure. As you can well see from the plans, all sides of this project are very visible. So, the suggestion was to continue to work with the applicant to see if there's a possibility to integrate that trash enclosure into the building so that it is not a standalone feature. The third issue was with regard to the building elevations. As the applicant noted, there are entry features that are proposed with the material of ephes down two grade. Suggestion was made that the lowest eight feet incorporate a different material just for the longevity and to lessen the impacts to that ephes material. And I did have that specific conversation with the applicant already, and they were agreeable to continue to work with staff on including a different material for that first eight feet. In addition, with regard to the building elevations, there was some attention brought to the north elevation specifically. That elevation includes that ephes material that's primarily used at the entrances, as well as provides a canopy, which may signal some consumers that there's an entrance on that facade, and there's not an entrance on that facade. So, staff has reached out to the applicant as well, letting them know that in order to avoid confusion or minimize confusion, rather, for some of the customers, that we have some ongoing conversations on possibly some revisions that could be incorporated into that north elevation. Then some of the other details are a little more site-specific, maybe relocation of the bike parking area to a more prominent location in order to maximize its use, as well as providing a pedestrian connection from this site to the McDonald's in order to promote pedestrian movements rather than short-term car trips within the shopping center. So, that's, I think, the nuts and bolts of Commissioner Farr's comments. If he has some additional information he'd like to share in his comments, I defer to him on that. But I wanted to provide that background and let you know that staff has done the outreach to the applicant, and they are agreeable to continue to work with staff on all of those issues. So, we'd just be looking for some consensus from the commission if they're agreeable to continue those conversations.
Is there anything Commissioner Farr would like to add?
Thank you for the excellent summary and positioning on those comments. Two items, small. One, just to add, a finding on the retaining wall design that Julie did not speak to, and that is just the engineering aspect of the stormwater retention system immediately adjacent to the bottom of the retaining wall. Typically, there's a drain tile placed behind retaining walls at their lowest place to prevent hydrostatic pressure on the backside of retaining walls. And usually, city staff and engineering reviews that at building permit application stage, I believe, not at this early stage. And it just appeared through the grades proposed for the stormwater system that those were about the same elevation. So, I could conceive that the infiltration from the stormwater system would in fact just laterally discharge into the drain tile system of the retaining wall, shoot out the base of the retaining wall, down the slope to our public sidewalk in Flying Cloud Drive Street, creating a potential slip hazard in the winter. And I think that engineering staff is aware of that concept, risked down, will provide appropriate attention at the right time to that detailing. The other one was actually going to be a hidden compliment to the architecture of the building. I appreciate the materials selected and the colors and the play of materials and textures and things like that. Specifically noted that half the building had a different parapet height than the other half of the building for another interest and scalability of the facade. The lower portion of the building seems to be relatively close to the roof height, suggesting that when you come in for building permit, you'll probably need additional HVAC rooftop unit screening to be in compliance with the code. That'll be reviewed at that particular phase also.
Correct. I believe on the, on the south side of the building, we may need to use some additional screening on the roof to help, well, to screen the HVAC systems on that side of the building. But on the other side, I believe we have more than enough parapet built in.
Okay.
To the building.
Okay. And then lastly, I think I did just say two, but now I'm onto my third, I'm sorry. The last was just an observation that in the removal of the drive-through lane, you in essence created a dead-end situation for the parking aisle on the south side of the building.
Correct.
Without a lot of maneuvering space to get out of those end stalls. And I think that because of the limited number of stalls, it's probably an acceptable condition. I think staff can review that further also, but I just wanted to make note of that.
Correct.
And I think you had suggested maybe employees park there instead of customers, which would make that a little bit easier.
Correct, correct, absolutely. And oftentimes, we might, I see that we're not illustrating that now, but we'll sometimes stripe off one of the spaces so that there's an easy T-turn for somebody if they are looking for a space and get to the end, they can turn out and turn back and slay onto the backup.
Sure. Or relocation of the accessible parking stalls over there.
Correct.
Those are usually vacant, especially the access aisle.
Exactly.
That provides that backup area.
Correct.
Great, one of those.
Good idea.
Thank you. Is there any other comments on the commissioners about those consensus items? The proponent, are you concerned about any of those items? Continue to work with the city on them?
No, I don't believe so. Julie did a good job of illustrating what the concerns were, and I think that there's some logical steps to be taken to address each of them. I appreciate Commissioner Farr's comments. And I don't foresee any issues kind of working with the appliance staff to resolve those.
Okay. Is that acceptable?
Very much so. Thank you.
Does anyone else have any other concerns, questions?
I have a quick one. It might be for a proponent or for staff, and it relates to the addition of the retaining wall and what historically I've noticed contractors doing with their snow during winter movement, winter snow removal. And they just kind of push it off the end onto what now is larger than what it's going to be in the future. I just, if you had thought about that and what kind of snow maintenance mitigating factors have been put into play, the long term, kind of driving around and noticing that that's kind of the way that that's been managed in the past.
Okay. So, the concern would be that if they push the snow over there and it goes off the end of the retaining wall, that it's going to be that much closer to the public walkway and things like that, or just in general? Are you talking about a?
Correct.
A long-term construction issue? I don't know, or?
No, to your first point, correct, yeah.
Okay. That's certainly something that we can look at for the site due to the, kind of, let's just say, tighter nature of the site and the fact that it's surrounded by other parking areas. I would foresee that the majority of the snow is going to be removed from the site during the winter, especially anything heavier than, you know, I don't know, ballpark would be six or eight inches, would not be able to be held on site. And we have worked with this client for, I don't know, five years now, and we've done half a dozen projects. And many of them are similar sites, and they have a service that they use that does that work for them. So, I would foresee that that would continue for any areas where they don't have the adequate snow storage.
It's kind of out of the purview of what our license is to be able to ask questions, but it was just something that I thought would, might address.
Right. Okay.
Any other, Mr. Chairman, can I follow up on that comment? Since this is a planned unit development, I'm sorry, are there any, where is the planned unit development district boundary? And are there any shared services that are covenants or anything like that that would go along with this property in terms of shared maintenance for mowing, plowing, light fixtures, signage, et cetera?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, in this particular development case, the boundaries of the PUD request before you this evening is this parcel. Now, there are cross-access and shared parking agreements between this property and adjoining properties, because, you know, those of you who have visited the site understand that there's a, basically a communal parking area, if you will, and common access that is shared between a variety of parcels out on the site. With regard to how mowing or snow removal is addressed, that's outside of, that's a private matter outside of the city's purview, as Commissioner Wookiee stated. So, the PUD approvals generally do not speak to that.
I have a question. I do have a question that might be in our purview then. Commissioner Farr, you mentioned something about the trash enclosure?
Yes.
If you'd like to elaborate a little bit, you'd like to see that incorporated within the building, because?
I would.
I'd like to hear a little bit more about that.
I would. It's my personal opinion that this is a site, what I would classify as a fishbowl site, different than maybe a standard lot along a block that has a more concealed rear yard. And I think there are opportunities for a different design response with trash enclosures based on their visibility to the public way. And I thought that this site would be a perfect opportunity to include the trash enclosure within the total building enclosure. There are other retail buildings, I believe in the city, along in the metro, trying to think of one good one right now, that would have a forward-facing trash enclosure room along with their electrical and mechanical equipment, behind a solid door, of course. So, tenants would still remove the trash from their unit outside onto the sidewalk, roll it to this location. It's just that location is nested within the building footprint proper, so it doesn't look like a small garage, or of course, the trash outbuilding. So, currently, the site has a, what I would say is a semi-attached trash enclosure on the north side. So, it's in the side yard, concealed from the public way because of its building material kind of matching the groundwork on the existing building. And so, now it's a foreign object out on the driveway, the drive aisle that's approaching the site. And I thought it might be an obstruction to the sightlines entering the driveway, because it's adjacent to the driveway curb cut. Staff told me that they did analyze that, and it's not a sightline concern for them, even with the landscape around it. Certainly, the customers, when they leave the building, are facing right into the trash enclosure, and those gates have a tendency to not always be closed. Employees don't do a really great job 100% of the time of latching those, especially in the wintertime. Gates have a tendency to flap open. And so, it's a less-than-perfect solution, and it's right at their front door, where their customers are going to see it every hour of the day that the business is open. So, I questioned whether that was the best place for it in a fishbowl site. That was the level of concern I had.
With your conversations with staff previous, did you have any conversation as to where it would be best facilitated in regards to aesthetics and feasibility, but also with maintenance and the size of the garage or the garbage disposal trucks coming in? They're quite large, and a lot of times they have to back into it. So, was there any?
While we didn't get, thank you for your question. While we didn't get into great detail, there is, actually, it's a hidden gem in the plans, the old location where apparently they had suggested it in the, I want to call it the southwest corner, where the stormwater retention is going now, there's still a ghosted image of where the applicant had proposed it. Through negotiations with staff and suggestions through the design process, staff had recommended a better location as opposed to that Flying Cloud Drive orientation. I think we can all agree that that was a very wise suggestion on staff's behalf, and so I'm much more pleased that it ended up where it is versus where apparently it was before we saw the application. That said, I think it would be an easy thing to do to incorporate the trash enclosure within the footprint of the building, facing east towards the drive aisle, even though that's the front face of the building. I'm going to call it the front face, the opposite face of Flying Cloud Drive, so that the trash truck could come in one of the two driveways, park adjacent to it. The trash hauler would open up the gates, wheel out the two-yard dumpsters. The tongs of the dumpster would dump it up, dump it back. He'd have to roll back in the dumpster back into the building, close the doors. So, I think there's a, there's a solution. It would take away some usable square footage of the building, and the architect would have to treat that door structure with sensitivity so that it doesn't look like a utilitarian door. But I've seen that around town quite a bit, and I think it would be a more successful solution for this property.
Looking at it on a cursory angle, I tend to agree with you. I just don't know what staff, what they would have to say on it.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, staff has done outreach to the applicant already, and I concur with Commissioner Farr that I think there's an opportunity to continue those conversations. The applicant is willing to engage in those conversations about how it could be integrated into the building. As Commissioner Farr pointed out, there is an access drive on either end of the building, so there would be an opportunity for the vehicle that is doing the trash pickup to be able to swing, if you will, swing through the site, do that pickup, and then exit gracefully, just as gracefully as they entered the site. So, I think it is an opportunity that we would encourage the applicant to pursue.
Does anyone have any concerns with that?
No, I would agree with Commissioner Farr's analysis of that.
All right, it is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to this? Seeing none, unless there's any further discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
Before we do this motion, what is this 6% and 5% island thing again?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, city code requires that a, that 5% of the parking area, 5% of the parking lot area be provided in parking islands. And so, staff requested that a calculation be provided as to how much of the parking area includes the parking, how much of the parking area includes the parking islands. So, my recollection is that they came in and didn't quite, they didn't quite meet that requirement, so staff is suggesting revisiting that prior to city council review.
So, they did not meet the 5%?
Right.
Because I'm reading that on the PUD with waivers, staff report this September 11th, that the equation came out to 6% of the total area on parking islands, which would go above and beyond by 1%.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, staff will take a look at that and confirm prior to city council review. We'll revisit that issue as well, as long as we're taking a look at some other design issues on site.
Okay, thank you. I was just confused, and so, that's it.
Mr. Chairman, my apologies. Could I just ask one more question before we vote?
Of course.
There was just an item that I just wanted to get clarified. When you wrote a letter to staff about the application, you were talking about the project team's efforts to retain as much as the existing construction as is possible?
Correct.
Reading from your letter, "The project shall retain the north-south parking area and a substantial portion of the existing building for both economy and reuse of existing building stock." Sometimes applicants include kind of like an overlay showing how much of the building they're reusing. Could you talk about that?
Yes. As we were looking at the redevelopment of the parcel, our first thought was to reuse, you know, the building that was existing. We have, you know, completed some documentation of the size of the building, of the openings and the structure within, and... And we're looking to, as we discussed, some tenant requirements and so on and so forth, where we're adding to it. It became clear that just the eastern wall, which is here, and the south wall had the greatest potential for being saved as we were adding to the north where the trash enclosure and the drive-through areas were, as well as, you know, to meet the setback requirements. At this point, we're going through that process of discussing the reuse of those elements with the contractor. I mean, and by saying the east and south walls, I mean the structures therein as well as the majority of the structure of the building. With the north and west walls, we're adding on beyond those. Those are probably taken out, you know, obviously, to allow for the new tenants to take full use of the space. And we are, we have been in a discussion with some contractors. There's a couple that we're talking to right now as far as the efficiency and reuse of those pieces. Obviously, there's some limitations that that puts on the new tenants and the building itself. And so we haven't, through the discussion, it's a little bit up in the air as far as whether it really will make sense to either recycle or reuse all of that structure. Our intent has been to reuse it, but it's, I think it's a little bit more up in the air right now as we think through the actual logistics as the structure itself would have to be revisited as we talk about new mechanical units and all those things being put in maybe different places than they were originally intended. So, I know that's a long, a little bit rambling conversation.
Exactly what I needed to hear. No, I want to thank you for your efforts to consider the reuse and recycling of materials. That's important to the city in general, and so we appreciate your efforts on that behalf.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Still, we'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion. I move to recommend approval of the planned unit development concept review on 0.8 acres, planned unit district review with waivers on 0.8 acres, and zoning district amendment within the commercial regional services zoning district on 0.8 acres, and site plan review on 0.8 acres based on plan stamped dated September 9th, 2015, and the information included in the staff report dated September 11th, 2015.
Can we hold out one second? Could we entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
Yes.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, back to your motion, Will. Second to Commissioner Farr's motion.
I'll second the motion on the table.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passes. Good luck. All right, on to our second public hearing of the night. This is for Burger King by Paul Dahl Associates Incorporated. Location is 16345 Terry Pine Drive. It's a request for a site plan review on 1.34 acres. Will the proponent please step forward? Good evening. If you could, state your name and spell it for the record, please.
My name is Paul Dahl, P-A-U-L-D-A-H-L.
Thank you. Would you like to walk us through your request, please?
Yes, I'm representing P3 Foods. One of the owners, partners of the ownership of P3 is Kurt Pedro. He's with me here tonight. They've requested a Burger King prototype upgrade to meet the current 2020 design standards for corporate. What that includes for this project is public area, new finishes throughout the dining area, restrooms, seating, those types of things on the interior. Exterior, it's an upgrade of finished materials that we're working with, city planners, Gully, to meet the 75% required materials of brick, stone, glass, those types of materials. We've upgraded the elevations from their current standards, which was brick and exterior siding, wood siding for the most part. We've replaced all of the wood-sided areas with brick materials. So at this point, I believe we're well above the 75% requirements on all elevations. The building modifications incorporate two archon elements is what corporate calls them. It's at the entry element and one new one on the north side of the building, facing County Road 5. Those elements are both out of brick materials. At the entry, we're replacing all of the wood siding that's there with brick. And the new element at the front on the north side is also all of brick. The, all the shingle mancered roof material will be replaced with standing seam metal roofing. And that's about all of the changes on the exterior. The rest of the area is existing luminal frame windows and existing brick. All of those areas are to remain as they are. Site improvements will include, for the main part of the site improvements, it's upgraded drive-through equipment and landscaping around the property. That's, that's it.
Great, thank you. Any initial questions for the proponent before we go to the city? Let's have one quick question. It says that after you remodel, it'll have 104 seats. How many do you have currently?
I believe there's 98.
Just a few more seats. Okay. Thank you. Does the city like to speak to this?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, as stated, the applicant is proposing a facade remodel as well as landscaping improvements to the site. The proposal before you does exceed the requirements outlined by city code, both with regard to construction materials and landscaping requirements. As you can see from the elevations that are provided, there is a mixture of perennials, grasses, shrubs that are provided on the site that are intended to enhance the pedestrian experience as well as provide year-round interest and color. In addition, I just wanted to provide some comment. If you have visited the site recently, you may have noticed the retaining wall that fronts along Eden Prairie Road. The county is working on that. As we speak, it's on their work plan within the month of September is what's been communicated to city staff. They intend to remove that retaining wall and essentially feather out that site because, as you know, the retaining wall is rather short. And they'll just regrade that site to not need that retaining wall any further. In addition to the improvements that we've already discussed, there would be improvements proposed to the parking lot lighting standards as well and inclusion of bike racks on the site. So similar to the previous agenda items, staff did have the opportunity to discuss with Commissioner Farr earlier in the day some of the comments that he had provided on that. So again, I'd like to provide just a quick overview of those. Staff has had those conversations with the applicant as well and alerted them to those concerns that were identified. And again, they are agreeable to continue conversations with staff on those issues prior to city council review of the application. In this particular site plan review, Commissioner Farr raised the issue of a potential pedestrian connection from that trail. That is along Eden Prairie Road, providing a connection from that trail into the site so that the pedestrians are channeled, if you will, in a safe manner from the trail to the Burger King facility. Also, as you exit the drive-through, there is an expansive asphalt, if you will, if there is an opportunity to provide some additional definition, whether that be through striping or signage or curbing or something of that sort in order to provide a little more definition for the vehicular circulation and traffic through that area. That would also likely improve the experience on the site. And at the drive-through entry, as you look at the site plan, there is a westerly drive aisle that approaches the drive, entry to the drive-through. There is striping that is proposed at that location in order to circulate traffic away and discourage vehicles in that lane in making the movement into the drive aisle. Suggestion was rather than painting, provide some curbing because that's just a little more definite way of communicating that intended traffic circulation. So staff is looking for some consensus. If that is something that the planning commission would like to see staff continue to work on with the applicant, we'd be happy to do so prior to the city council first reading. There were some other comments that Commissioner Farr raised with regard to the landscaping plan, just some miscalculations, if you will. And we've alerted the applicant to that as well. We expect that the landscaping plan would be revised prior to city council review or the final landscaping plan. It's unlikely that that would impact their landscaping proposed on-site because they far exceed what the requirement is. So those miscalculations aren't going to require revision to the plan. Just tweak the numbers, if you will. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. Staff is recommending approval subject to the conditions in the report and some guidance on the issues identified in our conversation this evening.
Commissioner, did that capture all of your concerns?
It did. If I could just maybe bring two of those issues together, which might help with the county's reconfiguration of the grade change along County Road 4, that's the opportunity, I think, to offer a pedestrian connection into the site. Since the applicants offered to provide some bicycle stalls, I think that's a busy intersection. I'm relatively local and I frequent the restaurant myself. And so I know that it can get busy there with cars, bikes, and automobiles. So if we can make that safer for all parties, I think that would be a win-win situation. And in working with that grade change, whether retaining wall will be repaired, I think that could be a great addition.
I would echo that, especially with the, I've biked there with kids and cutting into the Terry Pine. It is a little, it is pretty busy and there is nowhere to go. You're cutting across the road, so.
Right.
I think that's a good point.
Right.
Proponent, do you have any concerns about that consensus and looking at those items as you further go?
I do have a little bit of concern with the grade change, especially if we're talking about bicycle traffic from the trail. But we can take a look at those grades and see what we can do because it does have a berm there right now. And even after you get past that berm, it's still sloping down into the parking lot. But we can, we can take a look at that. I'm not sure where on the site, if it would be best off at that northwest corner of the intersection of 5 and 4, if we came around the front side or from the side at the bike trail. We'll have to take a look at that and see what works out best for the grades.
Thank you.
But I think we can.
Either would be agreeable.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
Typically, I think a sidewalk would be on private property. But perhaps because of this condition, I would be open if the existing berm on the south side against Terry Pine Drive was an existing feature that was difficult to work around with a new sidewalk, if that was placed on the public property adjacent to or close to the curb outside of the applicant's property. If staff would be okay with that, that would be something I wouldn't mind to get the feature included.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, staff is certainly willing to continue conversations with the applicant in order to further the design changes that were discussed this evening.
Any other concerns, questions, comments from the commission?
I just have one, and it's one to say I'm in favor of the work that you're trying to do with either some kind of curbing or something on the paint idea that you've had when you work with staff on the entry into the parking area, if one is going through the drive-through, which I've done for many years as well. There is confusion there as you just come into that spot, once you've entered the property. And any effort to try to get us all to go where we need to go, that would be great.
Sure. I can add on to that potentially and suggest that really a sign is, in my opinion, the best solution. I can see how planting a sign in the middle of your asphalt is something, one more thing to plow around in the winter time and it'll have a tendency to get hit. You have a light pole there, well-guarded by a few bollards. That's almost too far away from the sign, but that sign is really the true solution.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Okay. If none, it is a public hearing. Would anyone from the audience like to speak to this? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I have a question before we have a motion. The, I think I've got my cardinal directions right. The east edge, the stripes, the parking delineation stripes are going to be seal-coated over and the stripes are not going to be put back in. Is that correct?
Correct, yes.
Is that the, I don't remember if that was the area that most people, employees especially, parked that have, that are adjacent property to the east in the past? I'm not sure of the history behind that.
The times that I've been out there, there's been very few cars parked along there, usually trying to find shade in the summertime. That area would be designated specifically for larger vehicles, buses, trucks with trailers, moving vans, things like that, that take up typically four to six spaces when they're in the parking area. So typically, I don't know, is there an agreement with adjacent property for parking?
No agreement that I'm aware of. I just know that that back area there, especially for you folks that have been there a lot, and thank you for coming, by the way. During the school year, the buses and the construction guys, they really made great use of that back area actually to park parallel with that curb. So that was really the thought process behind it is continuing to use that space that way. Our employees, we don't have their, they're installing stalls. It was really a parking stall.
Thank you for adding that. I kind of thought that that's where you were going to go with the usage of that because it seems like that is what it's intended or what it would be most optimally intended for. I didn't know if adding large, parallel type, just a few stripes would actually bona fide that spot for the larger vehicles, for commercial motor vehicles.
Yeah, I think that would be appropriate to add some verbiage to that area designated for large vehicles and some striping, as you're saying.
Entertain a motion?
I move to close the public hearing.
A second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And I would move to recommend approval of the site plan review on 1.34 acres based on the plan stamped September 3rd, 2015, and the information included in the staff report dated September 11th, 2015.
A second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, it is approved. Good luck. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the planner's report. Do we have a planner's report this evening?
No, sir.
Members' report this evening.
The members' report for this evening, the community commission for the community advisory committee, excuse me, for the light rail, met last week or two weeks ago when we discussed the updated budget for the line, which is taking $250 million off the total budget instead of the over-budget number of $372 million, eliminating the final stop, which was the Mitchell Stop, and deferring the Town Center Stop. Right now, because of the changes that were made to the line in the budget, it has to go, the entire line has to go back through the municipal consent process. So that's happening now. Eden Prairie's municipal consent meeting is tomorrow night here with the full committee. Hopkins, St. Louis Park, Minneapolis, all the municipalities along the line have to approve the new plans. They are talking about having municipal consent completed by October 11th and moving into environmental impact, second quarter of 2016, and engineering late, second quarter of 2016. of 2016. Heavy construction would be 2017 through 2019, with the hope that 2020 is when we would open up and have our first runs of the light rail. The other discussions were involving, again, housing along the line, which is important to a number of members of the commission.
Great, thank you. Any questions for the commission?
I do have a question. The municipal consent, which I'm assuming is tomorrow night's city council, is that a consent calendar item, or is that a public hearing item?
It's a public hearing.
There will be another public hearing. So for our live-watching audience, they'll get another opportunity to voice their opinion if they really feel so.
Yes, they should come down to the hearing tomorrow night and voice their opinion.
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to point out, I think there's some preliminary open house activity prior to the city council meeting tomorrow night. I'm just giving an explanation of where the process is at this stage.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, there is an open house that will be staffed by city staff, as well as staff from the Southwest Light Rail Project Office. That will be occurring from 6 to 7 in the common area outside council chambers. And then the public hearing will be held as a part of the meeting, which begins, the meeting itself begins at 7 o'clock.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is my understanding that the two abandoned stations in our city, will they have potential for construction sometime in the future if budget or demand warrants, or are they classified as permanently abandoned and dismissed?
The Town Center Station would be able to be built at some point when budget allowed. The Mitchell Station would likely not be built with the line stopping. It would be prohibitively expensive to go out that far on a future date.
Thank you.
So on the engineering angle of it, the line itself is, in its present, is in the exact same location, it's just that the station itself is being deferred?
The, right, the Town Center Station is being deferred. The line will end at where Southwest Bus Station is now, or close by.
Any other members' reports? All right, any continuing business? Any new business? Then I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We're adjourned.